I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on our agenda is to approve our agenda. Are there any additions?
Vote.
Vote the amount.
Who did it?
I have to change the amount for the electrical box. It's gonna be like thirteen hundred.
So it'll be a correction?
They're supposed to get me a quote, but they didn't.
We'll probably have to make it as a correction.
When are they gonna do that?
He was supposed to do it today, but I just looked at my email and I didn't.
Okay, so you want, I could take that out of there.
Then we're gonna have to have a special meeting to have it approved, because we need to... Unless that wouldn't need to be done. We could just put that next month.
Why don't we put it...
We'll table it.
Okay. All right, hey Dan, listen to this. I make a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment. That is to remove the approval of new electrical box for the basement. We're gonna table that for this meeting.
Well, if you're tabling it, it'll do...
No, we just, when we get to it hun, we'll just table it.
Can we push that down the road?
Yeah, we're gonna take care of it, because we gotta get a new call.
Okay, all right.
Full call, yeah.
Okay, I withdraw my motion and resubmit it with the proof is the agenda is submitted.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens. Supported by Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And five ayes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes of Tuesday, April 13. Make a motion that the minutes of April 13 be approved as submitted.
I'll support that.
Motion by Stover. Supported by Stevens. To approve our meeting minutes of Tuesday, April 13. All in favor say aye.
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 Five ayes, motion carries. Next is our financial report. We began the month with $433,744.18. We took in receipts of $18,988.25 and made dispersments in the amount of $34,032 even. And that would leave us with an ending balance in the general fund of $418,743.43.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve our financial report. We'll call vote.
No, not on this.
No, not on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Signified by ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, there's a letter that we got from St. Clair EVA on COVID vaccines. And their partnerships and stuff like that. Does anybody want this read, or is it good enough if we all read it?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Have there been any changes in this situation with the vaccines?
No. No. No, there's no change. No, it was just that they wanted... That eighty-eight percent of the... Just telling how it's being delivered and how, you know, it slows down the vaccine and how it works and stuff like that. And how many were delivered to our people in our township.
I mean, it's starting to become more and more widespread.
I'm concerned that we still need additional vaccination doses in the county. And if that's changed, like... And I'd like to know if we can do anything to encourage it to change, so we have the doses that everyone needs.
Yeah, well, there's more increased placing where you can get vaccinated.
It is every day, Dan. I mean, the...
Because I know that they seem to have had a problem, at least as of the 3/16th, with the month that they're getting.
Yeah, well, I know that now...
And then Whitmer actually requested more vaccines. They did send the, um, Desavir instead, actually.
Yeah.
During that spike.
I know they are now allowing you to go to like CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid and that.
And young people too, though.
Yes, my son-in-law, my... Yeah, my son and his wife were vaccinated Sunday, Saturday.
I went through my annual checkup with my doctors and they go, "Have you had your shot?" I go, "I am," because they said they wouldn't give you there.
Okay.
If they loosen the neck, I'm really congruent if you've been vaccinated and passed the two-week mark.
Right.
Also, so there's some cancellation, is from what I understand, if you've had a kind of a heavy reaction to the vaccine, like I did, like for the second goes and second year for the first, then it's really a testament to your immune system doing the right thing.
Right.
The immunity level is probably higher.
Right.
If you had the reaction, you need to know you stuck there.
Okay. Yes. So I...
Cancellation for a bit.
I think our county is doing the right thing and so is everybody around us.
I hope so.
Okay. Onto new business. The approval of hiring John Monte from project engineering as our engineer on certain projects that we'll need him for and also to include his engineering fees.
Have we had anybody before?
Yeah, we have. We had a firm called SSOE. And then we, on projects that they were involved in, that they were representing the applicant, we had John Monte. So, that's the thing, if we hired John Monte, he represents like our last applicant for plan commission. John was the project engineer, so we couldn't use him to review that, so we'll have to get a backup.
But, the only person that I know that we're gonna need him for is for Tuma, right?
Red Barn.
Red Barn.
Yotuma.
Yeah. It's Mr. Tuma.
Yotuma.
Yeah, Yotuma. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Right, but, yes, but if we ever have a case, though, where John is representing the client, we've had John here quite a few times.
We'd have to find somebody else.
We'll have to find somebody.
We'll have to come and do it.
Well, then we could use the county.
Yeah, we could use the county.
And what, like, what kind of, for instance, what would we use them for, just for drainage?
Yeah, drainage and the various, the engineering portions of it, like Steve Casson, he does a lot for the planning, you know, site things, but for the actual engineering, the elevations, then you need an engineer, a licensed engineer, that would John.
So that's just like on different projects, not like every project, or it is?
Only the county can do it.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, John Monte is very good. Of all the engineers that come through here, he is probably our best set. But usually his site plans are very well done. And if we have to make changes or just usually slow changes, so I say, "Not many." So, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of John Monte, a project engineer, and with the attached engineering fees. Do I need to read all three?
No.
Okay.
Support. Dan. Motion by Stevens, supported by Dan Skolson, to approve hiring of John Monte for project engineering and to include his engineering fees. This will be a roll call vote.
Well, one other point, too, John is locally just over Elgin X, so sometimes when people are closer, it's easier to get hold them.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Oh, yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All votes are yes, motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is to approve border review pay from $10 per hour to $15. When I, the board, when we had our last border review, the guy said, "You know, Bill promised us a raise before, for us, and they said, 'Are we getting one?'" And I looked into my goal, "No." But then I started thinking about it. Everybody.
Who was the last time they got a raise? A long time ago, probably.
They never gotten raised. They've always been paid this month. So, I mean, we hire everybody and they, so it's time to give them, bring them up to where it's supposed to be.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the border review raise from $10 an hour to $15 an hour.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to give the board of review $10 per hour to $15 per hour. That will be a roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All votes are yeses, motion carries. Next on the agenda is to increase the ZBA application fee from $250 to $500. The reason for this, it does not cover enough to pay the people and for electric and stuff.
So we have to double the fee?
Yeah.
I think that's a lot.
That's a lot, doubling our fees. Are they comparable to other townships?
Most places charge a thousand dollars. And more.
Because we're not supposed to make a profit.
We're not. We're not gonna make a profit.
So if the, the ZBA, there's five people, right?
Five dollars.
And they get $30 a meeting.
Forty-five, thirty-five, and then thirty dollars.
Okay, so a hundred and fifty and another twenty would be like a hundred and seventy.
Most of places pay a lot more than...
I'm just saying, we have to like be able to show that we're not...
We're not making money.
Yeah, so, but what else, what other expenses?
What are the other costs beside the human costs, the personnel costs?
I mean, like if Brenda has to do paperwork or whatever, there's...
Her, her.
But even if she does like a whole hour, that's, you know...
Okay.
And even if you put electrical costs or copies or whatever, I mean, we just, we need to be able to justify.
And there's mailing costs also.
Right.
Personnel costs in the office.
Right.
Mailing.
Right.
Any other costs that we need to consider?
Well, how about this, why don't we just table this? Do you want to go and research? Come back next week.
Maybe do some comparisons around and figure out what...
I'll call around.
Just do, just do like a bare-bones cost, the cost of salary.
Because if we need to do it, I have no problems doing it. We just need to...
No, that's good.
We can't do something.
I share a gen's concern. I think we need to have a pretty good idea on paper of what costs we can cover, so that it doesn't appear that we're making any profit, which we are not supposed to be doing.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to table the increase in ZBA application fee from $250 to $500 pending a review of cost.
I'll support that.
All favor, by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll bring it back.
Yes.
That was a good question.
Yeah, okay. Next on the agenda is approve forfeiture of bond 3453. These bonds that we were, are asking to be forfeited, the people have had a chance to get a CVO and they have not come forward or tried to finish their bond.
And they're not, they're all old.
They're really old. Yeah, if you look at the dates.
Yeah.
Can we do these all at one time?
But they have to be individual, like...
Okay, no problem. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the forfeiture of bond number 3453 for $250.
Support.
These have to be roll call?
Yeah, but it's roll call, but whatever they decide. Yes, they have to be roll call.
Yes.
Joe?
Patty?
One more question.
Oh, oh, yep.
Were the folks whose bond was being revoked notified that this was...
Yes.
No, they get a letter after.
After or before?
After.
After.
Because, I mean, some of them may have, I would suggest that before that, you could, they might want to come before the board and plead their...
No, it's been ten years.
They've had plenty of opportunities, I think, I mean...
They have been called, Dan.
In, in the past, Brenda's called and they don't return the call or, you know, don't respond.
And a personal outreach situation, so...
Yeah, they've been called.
Yeah, and it has on the permit, when the permit expires.
Right.
So...
And the bound, yeah.
Yeah, you notify people when the permit's being expired.
Yes.
Yes, or the, when the permit is gonna expire.
Yeah.
I let them know that they have the option to request an extension.
Right.
And sometimes, we don't hear from, that respond to that letter, or they don't respond.
Well, that's good to hear. I just think communications about these things can be, can leave a lot of misunderstandings if there, if there's outreach from a township, which apparently there really is, quite a lot of.
And if I can just mention to you, Dan, any of the bonds that you have forfeited in recent history, no letter of response or no phone call to my letter that indicates that the board revoked their bond. No, no response.
So it's their interest has weighed.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, that, it sounds like you really are trying to make sure there is a line, but if they don't respond, they don't respond.
Right.
Okay, so...
Joe, Patty?
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Next, oh, I'm sorry, I slipped here. Next on the agenda is to approve forfeiture of bond 3692 for $250.
Okay, this is for Verizon, does that look tower, makes a first call?
It's for one of their upgrades, and I called them numerous times. To be, and to be honest with you, none of these cell tower upgrades call for the final. None of them.
Yeah, we'll have somewhere next month.
Yeah, they just don't call. And then when I try to reach the people, they don't answer.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the forfeiture of bond number 3692 for $250.
Support. Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All votes are yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is forfeiture of bond 3694.
I make a motion that bond 3694 in the amount of $250 be revoked.
I'll support. Sorry, Joe.
No, that's all right. I'm probably glad you're doing the people.
Motion by Stovers, supported by Anderson, to forfeit bond 3694, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Dan? Dan?
Yes. Yes.
All votes are yeses, motion carries. Next on the agenda, I want you to know that I called them personally and told them, and they said we had to do what? Yeah, go.
Okay, good.
I called them personally.
No, they, they seem very, from what Brenda said, they seem very reasonable.
They, they are reasonable, I just want you to know that they were called. Next on the agenda is to approve forfeiture of bond 3930.
If I'll make a motion to approve the forfeiture of bond number 3930 for $2,295.
Support. Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover, to forfeit bond 3930, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
And Dan? Dan?
Yes. Yes.
All votes are yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a report from Pam Blau on our, on our park. The park sign still needs picked up. I didn't know that. She had told me that it's import urine. I have not gone to pick it up because I don't know where we could store it.
Store it up here.
Where?
Where?
No, can we open the door and bring it up in here, or?
Really?
Where?
Okay, how long is it? I mean, how big is it?
It's big.
Oh, it is big.
Yeah.
Do they care that we have...
As far, I will give them another call. She said they didn't really care at this point, but maybe now they might care.
Will it fit in one of the bathrooms? I don't know, I think it's pretty big.
Oh, it's huge.
It's big, yeah.
Oh.
So, I, I will call them and see if they still don't care. Maybe this summer, we, you know, I think she's been waiting until we got our grant money. We don't need our grant money. We have money. We can get this signed up.
Yeah.
So...
All right, yeah.
We...
They'll, they'll keep it.
I'm gonna call. Anyway, I guess pretty...
Can I ask this, does this place who makes the signs, will they mount it? Will they come out?
I don't think so.
I think the road commission will help us do that once we cite it.
Okay.
And get the permit for a sign.
All right.
We need a sign permit.
Well, they have already called the road commission, David has, and they came, they wanted to try to put it right away. It can't be there. It has to be in a certain place. And we do have to pull a permit, which we kind of knew that.
Yeah, we'll have to, this is only a one-sided sign, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have to, in the future, look at getting another side, so we can see it from both ways.
Well, it's going to be mounted, of course. Is it going to be mounted, so you're turning your head to look at it, it's not going to be mounted where you can see it from one side, not the other, is it?
Well, okay.
No, it should be mounted like this way, sideways, right?
So when you're driving, you could see the sign?
Yeah.
If I have the park, is it this way or this way?
Well, if it's a one-sided sign, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be...
Right.
What sign I'm looking for, Mr. Steele, perpendicular. It would not be perpendicular to the road.
Well, I thought this, okay, I would have to review the plans. I thought for the sign, it would be perpendicular. It could be, you know, horizontal with the road.
Yeah, that would be...
Well, whatever, I mean, if it's horizontal road, hey, sign works. If it's gonna be perpendicular, we'll just have to get an outside name?
No, I don't think that's how it's gonna go.
I think it's per, I guess it's just perpendicular to the road.
Yeah.
I suppose.
I would say it would be, or we would have gotten a two-sided.
Well, if it's gonna be perpendicular to the road, you want two-sided.
Yeah, horizontal would be, like, the back of the sign is facing the park and the front's facing the road.
Well...
Parallel.
Parallel.
There you go.
Parallel. Okay, phase one, she says, the pass park grant status. We have worked on it. I, we had to get that sigma number, which Colleen helped me get it, because she had declined the sigma number, that has successfully gone in. But it looks like it won't be available. Once funding has a secured final construction documents, we need to contact her and tell her we don't have to wait that, we have money.
Well, we need, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
So, but if we, the grant application, was it the application, like, when they filled out the application, was it for? Like, did they specifically say for phase one? Because if they did...
Not completely for phase, it's just part of, sort parts of it.
All right, because that hasn't been decided if we were approved for the grant or not.
That, from what I read, it says that it's gonna come out in December.
Right, right.
So we need to make sure that we don't go ahead and do something that we applied for, for the grant and pay for it, and then...
Right, and then, yeah. But I think the grant also, we can use it for gravel and other parts of our park.
Yeah.
I'll, we'll double check.
Yeah, just to make sure, because we don't wanna be approved for it and then say, "Well, too bad. You applied for it for this and you don't need it now."
Yeah, we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think, well, if all goes well, it'll be a year from now that we'll be getting this.
Hopefully not. Hopefully we'll can do something this year. And get at least our drive, some of our driveway in and our sign up.
Well, yeah, but yeah, getting the sign up's great, but we'll see, you know, Jennifer raised a good point about we don't want...
Well, we'll check with, but we do have money we can use to do some things.
Right, but what I...
If nothing else, level the land.
What I think is, well, happy, so we can start the driveway and, and any other money that we can get, we could use on other things on phase one. There's lots of stuff on phase one.
Right, right, and we can talk to Pam about that.
Yeah, so...
All right.
But, you know, if I want to comment, when we're getting letters of support, I was very impressed on, I didn't get turned down by nobody. Everybody went out their way to help us.
That's good.
All the way from the city of Richmond, all the way up to our state reps. All the way from the city of Richmond, all the way up to our state reps, the different agencies.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody was pulling for us, so.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or anything on the?
No, she said if we do have any questions, we could contact her.
Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is electrical box that we're gonna table.
Yeah, we need to table that.
Okay.
Yep. So, do we have a motion for that? I make a motion to table approving the new electrical box for the basement until either our next meeting or if we have to have a special meeting if the timing.
I'll support that.
Supported.
Joe supported that?
Yeah. Motion by Anderson, supported by Stevens, to table the new electrical box for the basement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye-byes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is to prove some gravel and a shed for the cemetery. I did talk to Dennis about this. He said what he would do is, he would, the shed didn't need to be more than ten by ten out there.
Okay.
And he would build it. He said he's got plans for it.
Okay.
He's probably gonna need a zoning permit.
Yeah, zoning permit. And he would, he said he would put in cement.
Did he do that for two thousand?
Yeah.
That's for the gravel and the shed.
Cement, yeah. He said he could do it up for under two thousand. So, I said, can you do it for under two thousand? He said, sure.
You're just using it to store tools, amenities, equipment down?
Right, 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 there's like a back and.
Okay, I'll prove, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve gravel and a shed for the cemetery for a cost of two thousand dollars.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve two thousand dollars for gravel and a shed for the cemetery. This will be a roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I gave a hand.
Yes, okay, I'm glad we're clear. All votes are yes, motion carries. What he also said is, what is most important was the gravel, the shed's not that important.
Okay.
He can do without a shed, but he wants the gravel and the gravel, so.
Yes.
What he told me. Okay. Next. Any questions on the bills? If not.
I'll make a motion that the bills be approved as soon as, support.
Support, I mean, motion by Stevens, supported by Stover, to pay our bills, to be a roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All, all votes are yeses, the motion carries. Well, versus some comments.
Bill Steeler, nine three three six St. Clair Highway. I have two questions, and I have them two statements. The first question is to Jennifer, are you, I asked clerk, are you aware that a certified letter was sent to you requesting you to forward an application for a temporary use permit to the zoning board?
I did get a certified letter from you. I, I've been out for three weeks because I had COVID, and I told it was taken care of.
Do you or anyone else at the township are aware that it was forwarded, my application was forwarded to the zoning board for review?
No, it was not. It was sent to the lawyer, and he sent you a letter.
All right, statement number one, then. Majority of the township zoning ordinances are viewed by the general public as limitations and violations, because that's mainly when and how they are administered to the zoning, from the zoning board. The ordinances are also a due process owed to the same public that they govern. When that due process is not carried out, it is known as a violation of due process.
You are lawyer. All right, I'm gonna let you finish, and this is the last we're gonna hear of it.
Who are you reading?
No, it's not the last.
Mr. Steeler, who are you reading from, or what are you reading?
I wrote this. If I may finish.
He's reading a statement.
Let the gentleman finish his statement.
Or if it was your statement.
Okay. This is what happened to me, and I'm hoping my visit here will cause the township board to see the error and correct it before the courts get involved. The error I am making reference to is that the supervisor was so focused on viewing and dismissing my request as an extension to my expired temporary use permit, that she overlooked my rights to request a new temporary use permit under a new building permit. So that's the end of my statement. Statement two.
I have a question for.
May I, may I finish, and then we can come back?
He wants to finish his statement, Dan.
I don't wish to finish, I have analogies.
Statement two. It is clear to me and others that the zoning ordinances give me the right to submit a new application for a temporary use permit for my travel trailer at nine three three six St. Clair Highway, and have it go before the zoning board of appeals. It is then I would be granted a new permit, and if not, then be given a written statement as to why. Then of which, if not, I would be allowed to pursue an appeal per the zoning ordinance guidelines. It is that, it is only at that point that the courts will have a clear understanding of each party's position. At this time, if the court gets involved, they will see two things. One, that my previous temporary use permit under three nine one four was executed and expired, all in accordance with the zoning ordinances. Number two, that they will see that my request to submit a new application was unfairly blocked and my due process was violated. That's the end of my statements. Dan?
Well, I was just wondering where you found that, because I looked as well to see if a new permit that, that you could file for an additional extension in some way, that the extensions follow the permits. I didn't find anything to that effect. If you did, I would like to see it. I mean, I don't doubt that you might have found something, but I didn't.
I don't know how to answer your question. I'm looking at this very simply in that, if we all agree that the previous process was done correctly, you look at the zoning ordinances, it says I could come in as a new person and say, I'd like to request a permit. And then, then I would get a written reason as to why they say no, of which then I can follow the appeals process. But I have not been given that case because it was swept off to the lawyers, and the lawyers looked at it again, like most people are, that I was trying to get an extension to the previous one that medics to your termination.
You, but you are not a new person. You are the same one that got the two twelve months. You're done. And that's what my lawyer told you.
And, and in that letter that you had sent me, and, and the lawyer's letter, it kept making reference to my request for an extension. I am not requesting.
No, you're asking for a new one, and you're not gonna get a new one.
Well, then that's, I'm asking you to see clearly, this is my opportunity to clarify my position.
Why don't you just, you do not need to live in a trailer to finish.
You don't have that right to tell me that.
Okay, fine. We don't allow people to live in their trailers to finish a house when they don't need it.
Do you feel the unfairness is going on here?
Only, you don't have an emergency.
No, I can't use hardship. Dan's made that very clear in a seven-page paper that I've written for him.
According to my understanding of the zoning ordinance, once you've been given your original twelve months and the second twelve-month extension, the only recourse that our ordinance allows you, if I understand the language correctly, is to go to court. Your recourse through the township has been fulfilled, according to our ordinance. So for you to appear before the ZBA again, it goes against the ordinance's provisions.
Right.
If that's my, and if I'm, if I'm, I stand corrected, that's my understanding.
That once, when you were denied last October, you should have done it then and went to court, not now.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I've read, and I, I don't read it the same way you do, but I'll go back, I'll go back and read it again.
But I, I would reiterate that it's my understanding that the variance goes with the land, it doesn't go with the permit. And for what you're doing, there's, you have exhausted the options, the extension options that the ordinance provided, and then were denied another extension on that basis, and that is the decision that you're disputing. And there's no other issue that's being raised with the board that we, that we understand, except the denial that the board made to your request for an additional extension. I would also add that I'm not sympathetic with what you're trying to do with that house. You're very persevering in it. And I'm not, I'm not here to make a judgment of whether you should or shouldn't have completed it. But I am here to say that at the time you came before the zoning board and requested another extension, the board did not see that the, and I think it was clear in the reasons giving, given for rejecting your request. They're, they're in the zoning board minutes, and they're in the zoning board, that you, the document that was produced when you were denied. There's a set of reasons. And I think that isn't, you'll see that it's very clear that you exhausted your extensions, and you weren't at liberty to give you another one, or, or to change the ordinance in that respect.
I understand everything you said, Dan. The one point that's new to me is you said that a situation like this is on the property, not on a new permit. And so what I've read doesn't clarify what you've said. So, to me, this sounds like an interpretation. If you could clarify that at a later date for me.
What I mean is, it's a mystery, the, the trailer's on the property.
Correct.
And you were allowed to keep the trailer on the property for the duration that the, and use it to live in for the duration that the ordinance specifies, and you did. And that's why another extension was not going to be granted by the zoning board. Not because we thought you should be finished or shouldn't be finished, but it was the specifications of the ordinance that that was as much time you were allowed to live in that trailer under those circumstances on that property. Had nothing to do with the permit. It was how long you could live in the trailer on that property. At least that's the way I see it. I, I think that your next recourse is to look at what the lawyers put out. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't think anybody on the board is, or wants to be in this case, if they were. Listen to what our lawyers say, and then discuss that with them, because we all feel that it hasn't belonged back at the zoning board, but it's a legal matter. And appeals of the zoning, to the zoning board that are in dispute, whether it's a torn denial, a partial denial, or whatever, they'll go to the circuit court. They don't go back to the zoning board. That's, that's, as I read the ordinance and as I understand the law.
Well, you're, Bill, what you're saying is you want to apply for a whole new permit and start the process over again.
Right, and that's temporary reuse.
Correct, I, I, we believe that the courts will have a difficult point here, because all the township is referring to a past that's totally met its, its, its task, but.
Mr. Steeler, it's the same property, as well as being the set of orders.
But it doesn't say that in the zoning, in the ordinance, it doesn't talk about that.
For the duration, and used for the duration that the approval was given.
He can't see it any plainer.
That's how I, I look at it, probably our lawyer looks at it. I haven't read anything from any lawyers, though, at this point.
He, he said it just the way it is. He can't see it any plainer. That's the way it is.
Well, thank you for your time. I'm over five minutes.
I have a quick, I have one last comment, just related to this exact issue, but you complained, and, and I think we're concerned about how much the costs have been to you for, of this whole process of just trying to build this house, get permits and spending, and inspections. And I would like to say that really those costs were, were to protect you, as well as to protect the township. And it seems, from what I understand, they really did. They saved you from working in a dangerous environment when the house was wrecked, because our inspector saw things in the foundation that you needed to get fixed to work in there safely. So the money that you spent was not, was for, not for naught, it was for your protection and the protection of the township for now and in the future. And I don't think that was an unreasonable, unreasonable thing to have you pay for.
No, it wasn't.
Berlin's good. I mean, and I think Berlin's tried to help you, from what I understand.
That's true.
Doesn't try to impede you.
Yeah, I've had plenty of help from, I've had plenty of help from everybody, it's just a big uphill battle, that's all.
No doubt.
Okay, thank you.
Is Dennis doing well?
Yes.
Okay, good.
He's back to work.
Okay. We're all back.
Okay, we're out for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.